First, before we go on to the actual questions and the study session, we don't have that many questions tonight. And that might be useful. Because I think it's important to brief people on the very tense situation on the Korean Peninsula. I think if we didn't do that, we'd be complacent because I think although it probably won't happen, there's a strong possibility of a military conflict breaking out on the Korean Peninsula. Basically, the background is, and it's two factors. First of all, as I think a lot of people know, la- last week, in fact, on the third of October and the ninth of October and the 10th of October itself, Party Foundation Day, the South Korean puppets infiltrated drones into the DPRK, some of which actually reached Pyongyang and flew over the skies of Pyongyang scattering anti DPRK leaflets. Now, the the significance of this is twofold or threefold. Firstly, it's clearly a violation of the DPRK sovereignty and the violation of international law. And also, it's very much a destabilisation attempt at DPRK, aimed overthrowing the socialist system in the DPRK. I know this might seem implausible that the South Korean puppets would try such a thing. But, you know, there's nothing that would stop them from getting up to this silly business. However, it's been taken very seriously because it is a grave violation of the DPRK's sovereignty. It is an assault on the socialist system of the DPRK. So there's been many statements, some from the KPA General Staff, the General Staff of the Korean People's Army, the DPRK Ministry of National Defence. But there was a very significantly several statements by Comrade Kim Yo-jun, Vice Department Director of the Central Committee of the Workers' Party of Korea. And the statement she made today, if I can just call that up one minute, read as follows. And I quote, "We secured clear evidence that the ROK military gangsters are the main culprit of the hostile provocation of violating the sovereignty of the Democratic People's Republic of Korea by intruding into the sky over its capital city. The provocateurs will have to pay a dear price." I think that statement makes things very clear, indeed. And the DPRK also taking a number of measures. Artillery units are being readied and anti-aircraft units as well. And the DPRK also took the step of cutting roads at the border. There are some roads that run between, you know, through the Korean Peninsula, you know, north and south. And these roads were today cut by the Korean People's Army. I'm awaiting full details from Case in April, but I'm sure those will be released soon. So it is a very serious situation on the Korean Peninsula. And I think it's important that we send our solidarity to the DPRK. I mean, maybe, maybe we should try to draft a statement quickly about this, saying that we support People's Korea against the provocations of the imperialists. So, I mean, you know, that's basically what I've got to say on the subject. If anyone else wants to quickly add anything to the comments I've made, just quickly, because this is meant to be a study session. So, yeah, Jeremy, go ahead quickly, please.
So I just wanted to say that, just imagine Russian drones would, you know, throw leaflets to overthrow the German government or the British government of Berlin or of London. You know how the whole West would cry about our violation of sovereignty and provocation and blah, blah, blah. That would happen if Russia did the same thing, or if, you know, another state did that, you know, or if the DPRK would do that. There would be, oh no, that's so bad, evil DPRK or evil Russia or blah, blah, blah. But if South Korea does the same thing, there's no international reaction. The UNO doesn't say nothing. The so-called Free West does ignore it because they gave the orders to do it. South Korea is not a sovereign state. There are no differences that are made in South Korea that are made in Seoul. Or everything that's done from the South Korean Communist Party Government. They do because of orders from Tokyo and from orders from Washington.
Thank you very much, Jeremy, for your contribution. I think it was useful. Okay, well, we're actually going to go on to the session now. And we just got two questions. One from Paula from KFA and Delicia Spain. And it was, "How can someone apply to study at the Kimelsung University? Is that how you gained your PhD?" And my answer is, yes. Foreigners can study at Kimelsung University. This started back in 1955. Though, as I'm going to explain in a minute, my PhD, my doctorate is not from Kimelsung University. The major course for foreign students is currently a Korean language course. But recently, the Information Science Department of the Faculty of Information Science, Modern Physics Department of the Faculty of Physics and the Modern Mathematics Department of the Faculty of Mathematics have been fully prepared to provide satisfactory education for foreign students. As Paula will know, two members of KFA Spain, Lorent, Comrade Lorenzo and Comrade Yuri, actually studied at Kimelsung University. KFA members with a proven record of activity and who work very hard for KFA may be recommended to study at Kimelsung University. Normally, to study at Kimelsung University, you would have to apply through the DPRK embassy in your country. As I said, my PhD is not actually from Kimelsung University. It's actually from the Korean Association of Social Scientists. Although I actually had to defend my dissertation in front of professors from Kimelsung University and other DPRK universities. So basically, Kimelsung University were involved with the PhD, but it wasn't actually through them. It was through the Korean Association of Social Scientists. And it all, this all began ironically when I wrote a long article refuting what something that Jason Umru had said about the DPRK. For those of you who don't know him, Jason Umru is a sort of internet guru. You know, the so-called Marxist guru, though frequently he always gets things wrong. And, you know, his videos show a very superficial level of analysis often. So I'd written an article refuting something that he said. And I showed it to the Korean Association of Social Scientists. And when I was in a discussion with Professor Kim Chang-gwon and my guide, Miss Reed, Professor Kim suggested that I write, turn the article into a thesis, you know, of about 100 pages. Originally, it was planned to be an MA, Master of Arts, but it was upgraded to being a doctorate. I submitted the paper and then in April 2016, I travelled to the DPRK and I went went to defend the dissertation, actually at the Cytech complex, which people may have seen pictures of. It's the building in the shape of an atom. And there were 15 professors, including from Kimelsung University, Kim Cheik, University of Technology and also the University of National Economy, the then Kimelsung Higher Party School, and a number of DPRK universities. And, you know, I think my defence of my dissertation lasted two hours. At the end, the professors voted to award me the doctorate. And I was awarded the doctorate by a vice premier of the DPRK at the Muncy Day Assembly Hall, which of course is the building that houses the Supreme People's Assembly of the DPRK. So, you know, that's basically it. And, yeah, just to reiterate, yeah, if you want to study at Kimelsung University, you've got the right qualifications. You can apply through the DPRK embassy in your country. Or if you're a KFA member and you work hard for KFA, KFA can recommend you. But, you know, this is for KFA members with who are serious and have a proven track record and worked for KFA. Comrade Lorenzo, I know, you know, I've known for a number of years. And he works very hard for KFA, as Paula is going to point out. You know, they actually run a stall in a market in Madrid. So, you know, it's not anyone who can apply. So that's it. And can I, before I answer the next question from Alan, can I quickly say to Jeremy that Felix can't get in? Could you send him the link, please, Jeremy? Because I'm getting messages from Felix saying he can't get in. If you could.
Yes. Wait a moment. I think I already had sent it into the group, but I can send it to him again?
Okay. Right, is Felix with us now? Oh, great. Welcome, Felix. Sorry you had problems getting in. I'm just going to answer the second question. And the second question is from Comrade Alan Bolland, KFA organisation secretary of KFA UK and head of KFA West of England and editor of People's Korea Today. And his question is an interesting one. "What magazines and newspapers are most popular in the DPRK on a national and regional scale? What do they write about in the DPRK press? Are there any specialised scientific magazines and women's magazines about fashion and lifestyle?" Well, to answer the question, in the DPRK, newspapers and magazines are distributed to every household, probably free of charge. The main newspapers are Rudan Simon, which roughly translated is Daily Worker or Labour Daily. I don't know if there's Korean language specialists on this, in this meeting. They can perhaps tell us what the correct translation of Rudan Simon is. This is the daily organ of the Central Committee of the Workers' Party of Korea. And then there is Minju Chonseong, or Democratic Korea. This is the organ of the government of the DPRK. And there is also Chosong Imegun, which is People's Army. And that of course is the organ of the Korean People's Army. These are the main daily papers of the DPRK. And the most popular, most people read Rudan Simon at workplaces each morning. The party secretary will read out articles on Rudan Simon. And also, I've seen on the Pyongyang Metro, they have like stands with the Rudan Simon of the day in a glass case. And additionally, there's the following daily newspapers. There's the Chongnyeong Jongui Youth Vanguard, which is the daily paper of the Socialist Patriotic Youth League of the DPRK. And Ru Dongjia Simon, which is not to be confused with Rudan Simon, which is the paper of the General Federation of Trade Unions of Korea. And there is also the Pyongyang Sinman, which is an evening paper for the city of Pyongyang. Some cities and regions of the DPRK, for example, Kaesong, have their own daily or weekly newspapers. Also, factories and universities have their own newspapers. And I actually met someone who was an editor of a university newspaper. As to periodicals, there is Kalajja, which is the theoretical magazine of the Workers' Party of Korea. And there is also the magazine Chalima. And of course, Korea Pictorial, which is published in different languages. Organisations like the Socialist Patriotic Youth League and the Union of Agricultural Working People also publish their own newspapers. There are specialist journals, for example, Kaiwon Sinman, which is for teachers and educators, as well as journals for social sciences, natural sciences, metallurgy and various other fields. Usually, the DPRK media will carry articles on socialist construction in the DPRK on issues that may arise or problems that may arise on the implementation of party policy. In the case of Rudan Simon, sometimes on ideological and theoretical issues. But also, you know, sometimes on sports in the DPRK, like football and table tennis, and also on health. And lastly, on international affairs, the DPRK media has covered the situation in Gaza and has actually published pictures of the situation in Gaza. As far as I know, there are no women's fashion magazines in the DPRK. Similarly, there's no magazines on lifestyle. But occasionally, the press may carry articles on lifestyle issues like diet, exercise, you know, maintaining good health and also on cookery. The Socialist Women's Union of Korea does publish a magazine that used to also be translated into English called Korean Women. So that's basically an overview of the DPRK media. And I'll just, well, I'll let Jeremy speak and then I'll pick up any additional questions in the chat. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead while I look at these questions in the chat.
Right, just wanted to, you answered my question I had. But maybe another question that arises. You said that they publish pictures of the slaves in Gaza. Do they have journalists, does the DPRK have journalists in Gaza right now?
I do not think they have journalists in Gaza. Would thought it'd be very unlikely. You know, they wouldn't get let in by the Israelis. I don't know if there's another way that they could get into Gaza. But I've not heard of DPRK journalists there. But I mean, I think they've used just media pictures of the what is happening in Gaza. Right, I'll just, I'll just take the questions. One by one. Yes, that's correct. Lorenzo and Yuri were there for a three-month language course. Right, so the question, so that I can be, I can also study at Kimelsung University if I'm a member of the Korean Friendship Association. Well, I think it's, to be honest, it's got to be more than actually just being a member of the Korean Friendship Association. It's got to be, you've got to have a proven record of activity of defending People's Korea with no ifs or buts. I mean, Comrade Lorenzo and Yuri actually worked very hard to get the recommendation to study at Kimelsung University. So it's more than simply being a mem- a member. Yes, you are welcome, Paula. The other question, "I am always convinced that the ideological affinity between DPRK and light masses is too great for the Western media to destroy its fatality. Seven or eight decades of a nation building are based on people's democracy. Rigorous educational fieldwork is unprecedented. They have nothing like shortcuts or handouts from the West. Unity between the state and masses is so rare and so uplifting." Yes, I totally agree. Yes, there are no tabloids in the DPRK. "Is there any active KFA in South Asia?" Well, there is KFA Cambodia and there is KFA Thailand. I believe KFA Cambodia is quite active. I think they have been in these sessions once or twice. Okay. So, I mean, yeah, Victor, yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a short question, I think. Yeah, we all, I think, know that the situation on the 38th parallel continues to be tense. And there are many provocations from the South Korean puppets of American imperialism, such as the recent situation with the drone, yeah, that you spoke about at the beginning of our session. And my question is, do you think there are any maybe requisit, sorry, I cannot, one second please. I need to check some words because my level of English is not really high. Sorry. Yeah, some, maybe, yeah, I copy my question, I paste my question to our chat.
Yeah, just reading your question.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I, yeah, I mean, basically, I think that is very much the case. You had in 2010, I well remember it, it was actually the 23rd of November 2010, when you had the Yongpyong Island incident where the South Korean puppets actually shelled a farming village in the DPRK. So the DPRK responded with artillery fire and short-range missiles. And two South Korean puppet military and two South Korean civilians lost their lives. And Yongpyong Island was destroyed. There's a video of it somewhere. And similarly, there was, in 2002, there was a battle between the KPA Navy and South Korean Navy, which you mentioned. Yeah, and I think we could see a similar incident like this happen again, only on land. You know, I don't, I mean, it's hard to predict. I don't think there would ever be a full-scale war for a number of reasons. Primarily because the DPRK is a nuclear-armed state. And no one wants to have a war against a nuclear-armed state. And even as South Korean puppets wanted to, their Yankee masters would pull them back from attacking the DPRK. They wouldn't be allowed to. But they, you know, I think there's every possibility of of an incident along the, as it is now, the Korean border. You know, what was the 38th parallel? Because it's not, it's not actually the 38th parallel now. All right, just waiting for the other questions. By the way, Alan, was that answer okay about the press and media in the DPRK?
Yes, yes, that's fine. That's what I was thinking, that the main one, my newspaper is Rudan Sinmoon. Then it's very popular, as you've seen everywhere, for free to read. That's what I was thinking. Yes, that's fully answered for me. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, got some more. Yeah. If you set up a, I mean, you know, it'd be great if you set up a KFA branch in Myanar. And you may, may get the opportunity to visit the DPRK. But again, it can only be after hard work and a record of working, you know, for the KFA. You know, afford the KFA. So there's the possibility, not saying it is a certainty.
Could I say something?
Oh, yes, yes, please go ahead, Jeremy.
I just wanted to say about the risk of a war. So the important thing is we have to remember the US is always, you know, making aggressions all over the world. They, you know, make aggressions in Europe against Russia or, you know, make a split, you know, provoke Russia against Europe, European countries, or, you know, make provocations. The soccer against the People's Republic of China and, you know, the Republic of China, that they have a conflict or they also provoke in the Middle East. And of course, on the Korean Peninsula. The thing is, if, for example, in Europe, there's a nuclear war. The Europeans will die in the nuclear inferno. But Americans will be safe. They're strengthening the nuclear weapons in Europe. And if there is a war, the Europeans will die and Americans will be safe. Or same with China. They will start a proxy by using a separatist island, Taiwan. And the Taiwanese people will die with Americans. The same is in Korea, often in the Korean Peninsula. They will use the South Korean people for aggression against the DPRK. And then the South Koreans will die, but they will be fine because they're on another continent, they're on the other part of the world. They're setting up a military bases all over the world, strengthening rockets, nuclear rockets all over the world. So these countries become the targets and the USA are safe. They sent everywhere, but they, nobody is able to really send troops against America because now on the north there's Canada and on the south there's Mexico. But nobody is strengthening foreign troops there. The DPRK isn't strengthening its troops anywhere on the world beside Korea itself. Now, that's China or Russia. Now, that's the evil thing of the US empire. They provoke everywhere and the damage gets to local people.
Thank you very much, Jeremy, for your, your comments. Just. Yeah, so I mean, I think it is much easier to visit the DPRK from either Russia or China. I'll just wait to see if there's any more questions come up in the chat. And then we sort of move over to the study session. Jeremy, go ahead again. This time I've seen your hand go up. Don't worry.
Maybe about ability to, the possibility to visit the DPRK from Russia or China and how it's for Europe. So I don't remember the name of the journalist by, but I remember hearing a phone interview with a journalist who visited the DPRK together with the Russian President Vladimir Putin. And he said that they were welcomed like friends, that there, there weren't any limitations or something. So the thing is, if Russia and China, you know, these people are the friends of the DPRK and of course, welcome with open arms. Of course, the people in Europe aren't enemy, but of course, we have to remember that these territories are controlled by the states of the US empire. And that they're, because of that, you know, that they may be a bit cautious. More cautious than they would be against their Russian or Chinese citizen.
Right, okay, thank you, Jeremy. Okay, well, I'm just going to respond to the, the question that's come up in chat and then we're going to move over to study. How can I work for the KFA? Well, basically, like KFA UK does, or KFA Germany, or KFA Andalucia does. I think you can start in a small way by setting up a social media for KFA Myanar, such as Twitter, Telegram and Facebook, maybe WhatsApp, maybe VK dot com, but yeah, just remind people, you know, I think people here know KFA UK is on VK dot com as well as Facebook. You know, VK dot com is the, the Russian version of Facebook. And it's a small way to start. And then you, you could organise online meetings like, like we do, real-life meetings, publish a journal or magazine, all, all these things. And you know, you, you can also find your own ways of defending people's career that may, may be more appropriate for the situation in your country. I mean, there's no, well, I mean, there, there is a wrong way, but I was, I was originally going to say there's no right or wrong way, but, you know, let us say there's no fixed pattern. Just because we do something, it doesn't mean to say that everyone else needs to do it. So there's all sorts of ways you can work to build KFA in your country. Okay, well, think, just, yes, please, please go ahead, Comrade AA.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Hudson. Hopefully, I'm not causing any echo. Here, like in New York, and people who care about people, the people in DPRK and their way of life, we take little simple steps. Once in a while, we go to their consulate and we show, you know, our solidarity. Just holding signs, US get out of Korea. And then here we have activist groups, we have meetings, movies, we see them, we read books read by, you know, like written by, you know, Comrade Leda Kimmy Song and other people and the Dr. Hudson. So I pick up his, you know, I mean, writings recently, very valuable. So the only thing is like, you know, I mean, rather than being excited about one country just because of their fabulous way of life, we have got to understand the underlying code. The cost is United States is demonising UDBRK and far more than it demonises China. So as people, as people, part of the oppressed world, we are experiencing a crucial time. So there's a DPR, there's not only DPRK humanity, are all our humanity to survive and thrive in the long term. So there is only one genuine socialist society in Far East, which is constructed through so many difficult times. So we have got to defend it very actively. So it takes a lot of reading, a lot of studies, a lot of active militant work in the street. And then, for example, of these days, United States, it's, you know, imperialist media was lying about DPRK and China and then, oh, especially Aziz Aziziyah and the writer and CNN, almost everyone, ABC. So what we could do is that you just take a picture of the headline and then you, this is how we can do it. We, you narrate it, you curate it, you tell the truth about DPRK. They use media, they use the fully funded Western media, and we use our little social media and then you educate yourself and we educate our friends. This is how we defend, in a very organic, small ways. Because this is people-to-person affinity for the way of life, where we are all aspiring to get there. Because we have to do that, because there is no other way around it. So here, as, as an activist, militant activist, we are the US get out of Korea. We don't, we don't take any nonsense being spread by US against DPRK. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that was an extremely useful contribution. In fact, you know, there was actually a lot in that, that we, we can learn from. You know, and particularly, you know, the activist style, you know, this is something that KFA UK needs to do more of is activism in the streets rather than simply online. But anyway, thank you for that contribution. Okay, seems to be one more question coming up in the chat and then, then we really must must get on with the with the study. Right, well, you know, I'll, I'll send you a reading list of what you, you can study. Now meanwhile, I'm going to start reading from text and I'll just put links to the text, uh, text we are going to be reading from. Okay, uh, the two texts I'm just reading from are Questions and Answers on the Songham Idea and Juche Adia Answers to One Hundred Questions. I'll just read from that then. And then I'm going to show a short video at the end. Let them just read some of these questions and answers. Right. Question eighty-five, what does it mean to give priority to military affairs? Answer, it means putting military affairs before all other affairs and laying the greatest emphasis on them in advancing the revolution and construction. Question eighty-six, what are the contents of the principle of giving priority to military affairs? Answer, the principle of giving priority to military affairs comprises two contents. One is to put the greatest emphasis on military affairs and the other is the solve all problems arising in the revolution and construction in subordination to military affairs. Eighty-seven, why should the greatest emphasis be put on military affairs? Answer, in the revolution construction, military affairs are a very important problem directly connected with the realisation of independence of the people and the country. Apart from military affairs, it is impossible to win in the revolution, defend the victorious revolution or guarantee the future security of the country and nation. Therefore, priority should be given to the group, given and the greatest attention be paid. So military affairs, to military affairs and the leadership of the party over the revolution and construction. Eighty-eight, why is it that all matters arising in the revolution construction should be settled in subordination to military affairs? Answer, the revolutionary struggle and construction work to transform nature, society and people entail heaps of urgent and important matters. How to cope with them successfully depends largely on whether priority is given to military affairs or not. Therefore, everything in the revolution construction should be viewed from the angle of military precedence and all problems be solved on the principle of subordinating and orientating then to military buildup. Question eighty-nine, what should be done to live up to the principle of giving priority to military affairs? Answer, the army should be strengthened into an invincible revolutionary force. Further priority should be given to the development of the defence industry. It is also important to perv- pervade the whole society with the spirit of giving precedent, preference to arms and military affairs. Ninety, what does it mean that the army is put up as the main force of a revolution? Answer, it means that the army is the main force for promoting the revolution construction and everything is done by relying on it as the base maker. So I'll stop there from that book and go on to Juche Adia Answers to A Hundred Questions. And last time we had got up to question sixty-seven. And question sixty-seven is as follows, what does it mean that the leader takes the absolute position in the development of history and the revolutionary struggle? Answer, it means that he is the centre of the driving force of the revolution and the socio-political organism is in a special position that nobody can take the, the place of. Question sixty-eight, what is the absolute position a leader takes in the development of history and the revolutionary struggle? Answer, in a word, it is the centre of socio-political organism. The leader is the centre of unity which integrates the party, army and the people together in a socio-political organism. In other words, he is the centre of ideological cohesion, organisational unity and moral obligation-based unity of the party, the army and the people. He is the cen- centre of leadership that commands the activities of, of socio-political organism in a unified manner as the centre controlling the living activities of an individual. Is the brain, the centre ensuring the living activities of the socio-political organism that consists of a host of people, is the leader, the top brain of it. Question sixty-nine, what does it mean that the leader plays a decisive role in the development of history and the revolutionary struggle? Answer, it means he plays a decisive role in carrying out the destiny of the popular masses, the driving force of revolution. Question seventy, what is the content of a decisive role played by the leader in the development of history and the revolutionary struggle? Answer, the leader establishes and develops the guiding ideology of the revolution and indicates the path of the revolution to the popular masses. He leads the revolution to victory by building up the driving force of the revolution and enhance- and enhancing its role steadily. He also solves the issue of his successor correctly to make it possible to achieve ultimate victory of the revolution. Question seventy-one, what does the Juche idea teach in its guiding principles? Answer, the Juche idea has explained the guiding principles to be maintained in the revolutionary movement in a comprehensive way. Its guiding principles refer to maintaining independent stand and applying creative methods and putting main emphasis and ideology in the revolution and construction. Question seventy-two, what does it, what is the principle of maintaining the independent stand? The principle of maintaining the independent stand helps the popular masses take the position as the master of the revolution and construction. It requires establishing Juche ideology, pursuing independence in politics, achieving self-sustained economy and adhering to self-reliance in national defense. Question seventy-three, what does the establishment of Juche in ideology mean? Answer, the principle establishing Juche ideology is the guiding principle of applying independence to the sector of ideology. Establishing Juche ideology means ensuring that the popular masses are aware that they are the master of the revolution construction, think about them and do everything with the revolution and revolution and construct construction in their country at the center and take the standpoint and attitude of solving all the problems with their own efforts. So I will stop there. And now I'd like to show a short video which addresses the current situation. One minute, I will, I will find it.
Should I share it for you?
Yeah, I'll put it in the chat and you can share, Jeremy, just one minute, one minute.
Great, while you're searching it, is it possible that I can read out a short poem by Barthold Brecht?
Yes, okay, go ahead, Jeremy, quick, please, quickly.
Yes, so I want to say this poem to promote more activity that more people are active in the KFA and participate at meetings and go on the street. The poem is called Who stays at home when the fight begins? Who stays at home when the fight begins? And as others fight for a cause, he must be cautious, because who doesn't fight will fight or he fought in English. Defeat. He will not even avoid the fight.
Defeat.
The one who defeat, not, not defeat. He won't even get what the next is, he won't even avoid the fight, the one who doesn't want to fight, because he will fight for the cause of the enemy who didn't fought for his own cause.
Right. Is that the finish of the poem?
Yes, that is the finish of the poem. I want to say with this poem that if somebody doesn't go to the meetings of the KFA, if he isn't active in the KFA, if he doesn't defend people's career with no ifs and no buts, if he doesn't, you know, speaks out against US empire, he's fighting for the cause of the US empire.
Yes, it's good point. I mean, might, maybe, maybe you can write down the poem and we, we can share it. It, I think on Telegram rather, rather than Facebook. Okay, well, if, if you'd like to share the video when, when you're ready, Jeremy. This, uh, this is just about the recent consultative meeting, but there's, at the end of it, there's like a very good music video and I thought it would be very uplifting to watch that now. So whenever you're ready, Jeremy, thank you for volunteering. And yeah, I mean, I agree with Paula, it'd be great to have more international meetings.
경외하는 김성은 동지께서 국방 및 안전 분야에 관한 협의회를 소집하셨습니다. 조선노동당 총비서이시며 조선민주주의인민공화국 국무위원장이신 경외하는 김성은 동지께서 10월 14일 국방 및 안전 분야에 관한 협의회를 소집하셨습니다. 조선민주주의인민공화국 국방상 노광철 동지, 조선노동당 중앙위원회 비서 조춘용 동지, 조선인민군 총참모장 니영길 동지, 조선인민군 총참모부 부총참모장 겸 정찰총국장 리창호 동지, 국가보위상 리창재 동지, 조선인민군 총참모부 법영국과 탐지존자전국을 비롯한 주요국 지휘관들이 협의회에 참가했습니다. 국방 및 안전 분야에 관한 협의회에서는 적들의 엄중한 공화국 주권 침범 도발 사건과 관련한 정찰총국장의 종합분석 보고와 총참모장의 대응 군사 행동 개백에 대한 보고, 국방상의 군사 기술 장비 현대와 대책에 대한 보고, 당 군수 공업담당비서의 무장 장비 생산 실적에 대한 보고, 국가보위상의 종부 작전 상황에 대한 보고가 있었습니다. 김성은 동지께서는 각 국방 안전 기관들의 보고에 반영된 자료와 대책적 의견들에 대한 평가와 결론을 내리셨습니다. 김성은 동지께서는 총참모부가 진행한 해당 사업 내용과 주요 연합 부대들의 동원 준비 상태에 대한 보고를 청취하시고, 당연한 군사 활동 방향을 제시하시면서 나라의 주권과 안전 이익을 수호하기 위한 전쟁 옥죄력의 가동과 자위권 행사에서 견제할 중대한 과업들을 밝히셨습니다. 김성은 동지께서는 협의회에서 우리 당과 공화국 정부의 강경한 정치 군사적 입장을 표명하셨습니다.